I'm going to move on. 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 I'm going to move on.
Our invocation to be led by the Honorable Raquel Abalas Bayakag, to be followed by the singing of our national anthem, our provincial hymn and municipal hymn, the recitation of the Vice Mayor's Creed and the PCL Creed.
Let us bow down our heads and put ourselves in the holy presence of God. Almighty and everlasting God, we gather before you today as members of this esteemed Sangguniang Bayan, seeking your guidance, wisdom, and blessings as we carry out our duties and responsibilities for the betterment of our community. We humbly acknowledge that we are mayor stewards of the positions entrusted to us as we recognize the importance of serving with integrity, compassion, and fairness. Grant us the wisdom to make sound decisions that will promote the welfare of our constituents and uphold justice in all our deliberations. Lord, we ask for your divine presence to be with us in this session. Fill our hearts with humility, unity, and respect with one another, enabling us to work harmoniously and cooperatively for the common good. Help us prioritize the needs of the marginalized, the vulnerable, and the voiceless, ensuring that their concerns are heard and addressed. May our discussions be filled with civility and understanding, fostering an environment of open-mindedness and inclusivity. Guide us to seek consensus and find solutions that promote progress, sustainable development, and social harmony with our municipality. Heavenly Father, we also pray for your blessings upon our fellow citizens. Grant them good health, prosperity, and safety. Strengthen the bonds of our community, fostering solidarity and cooperation among all residents. As we commence this session, we place our trust in you, oh God, knowing that you are the source of all wisdom and justice. Grant us the courage to act with conviction, the passion to empathize with the needs of others, and the humility to acknowledge our limitation. We offer this prayer in your holy name, believing that with your guidance, our efforts will bear fruit and our municipality will flourish. Amen.
Amen.
Mga kababayan, ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas. Kayang magiging, kailangan sinanalan. Palab ng puso sa itikoy buhay. Lupang pinira, kuyat ng magiting. Sa manlulupi, ikapasi sigil. Sanadatap tutok sa sihoyan, salami kau pagkao. Ayunatang tulakawin sa pantayang minamahal. Ang isakang matawat, kuyat ng umpay na natehing. Ang ituwi na talong nyamkayda, ang hayda matibing. Luwag na palaw ng walha, bigpat singka. Kuyang ang itsa bibigol. Amigayang napakayong napi, ang mamakay ng kahiyusayol.
Wherever I may roam, the distant land to see. I long to go back soon to sweet Bukidnon home. The lovely mountains high with forest song and bread. Bring memories to me, the home I long to see. The golden green tattoos, the river winding through. My heart no longer mourn, on wonders of the world. Well, I'll be gentle with the peace the travelers draw. Will know and ever know. Wherever I may roam, the silver waterfalls. In distance, one can see. In beauty they express, the stranger sings her praise. The long and steeped groves, the canyons deep and wide. Will ever be each time, in all who give the night. There my heart lives to be. In far away, the green old land. Understrewed starry skies, where love and joy never die. There my heart lives to be. In far away, the deep old land. Understrewed starry skies, where love and joy never die.
As sunlight, the love of pulitan. Di dita bukidnon, la nakapaduman. Unto'ta matakka, la nasakupan. Patakka patka, la tungay matawan. La ni di, biglang. Sigat na, puran na.
Susukun ang kahayon sa sitaka. Nakita ang kaniya ukabulanan. Kadugaya na walay tinutuban. Manu po iya kanin kanagan. Manolo fortis sa asukadungganan. Ang kinatas, ang iopki raupsan. Yakin bisol sa galanduan. Ang iyam halapalya kauhan. Nasaysay sayang kaduahan. Natusan, managi usa, mananescot sa blengka tauhan. Ipati kapal, magatikari. Sa tribo, kaka tiringan. Minahal nga manolo fortis, matahum na mulungso nagipoyan. Kadunay na unpasitunban, hugan lumun sa kahang puran. Minahal nga manolo fortis, matahum na mulungso nagipoyan. Kadunay na unpasitunban, hugan lumun sa kahang puran.
I am the Vice Mayor. My covenant with my people is to devote myself to public service. By divine providence and by the will of the people, I am appointed to preside over the local legislature. That with integrity and statemanship, I shall lead the local legislature in act measures and ordinances for the common good and fulfill my people's aspirations for happiness, peace, and prosperity. May the Almighty God help me consecrate myself for the people I am called to serve. For the PCL Creed.
I am the Philippine Councilwoman, dated by law, and now measures and ordinances that regard to the general election. In their pursuit for happiness and peace and liberty, I believe in the public service of myself as a guiding principle of my decisions. And as a guiding by the public of my decisions, may you all might be guided by my heart that I shall show you my institution and your freedom.
Please be seated for the roll call, Madam Secretary.
For the roll call, Honorable Reynaldo Elbagayas Jr.
Present.
Honorable Miguel Didi Mata.
Present.
Honorable J.S. Albareci on official business. Honorable Rena Edroti Kinio.
Present.
Honorable Elsie Vera A. Dagunlay. Honorable Flora May D. Pinaso on official business. Honorable Joy Lavizores Cordovess.
Present.
Honorable Raquel Abalas Bayakag.
Present.
Honorable Kristy Liparto Salabi.
Present.
Honorable Alex D. Payangga.
Present.
Honorable Mary Jane P. Gilian. Honorable Princess CJ B. Padin. There are ten members present, Honorable Chair.
So ten members present, column is hereby declared. For today's session, we request the Honorable Kristy Liparto Salabi as our majority floor leader. The Honorable Salabi, please.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Good morning to everyone and to all the people inside the session hall and also to our viewers live in Facebook. Welcome to our twentieth regular session of the twenty-first Sangguniang Bayan. Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to approve for the order of business.
Since everybody has been given a copy of the order of business, there's a motion for the approval of the order of business for today's regular session. Any second?
Second.
Any comments? I mean, the motion is approved.
We are now on the reading and adoption of the minutes of the nineteenth regular session and the special session held on last November 6th and November 11th. Since we are all furnished with a copy of the minutes of the mentioned session, I am moving for the dispensation of the order reading.
So there's a motion for the dispensation of the order reading of the minutes of the nineteenth regular session held last November 6th, 2025, and the first special session held last November 11th, 2025, respectively. Any second?
Second, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Any comments? I mean, the motion is approved.
Likewise, Your Honor, I am moving for the approval and adaptation of the said minutes.
So there's a motion and adoption, motion for the approval and adoption of the minutes of the nineteenth regular session and the first special session. Any second?
Second, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Any corrections? I mean, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Now let's proceed to the reference of business.
First item under the reference of business is the proposed ordinance of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled, "An Ordinance Allowing the Indigenous People to Operate and Invest Within Their Ancestral Domain, Recognizing It as Private But Community Property" under the Republic Act 8371, affirming their ownership by native title and exempting them from tenurial instrument issued by other government agencies, authored by the Honorable Alex D. Payangga.
I move to refer this to the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations and the Committee on Indigenous Cultural and Communities.
Refer to the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations and Committee on Indigenous Cultural Communities.
Second item is the proposed ordinance of Sangguniang Bayan entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing the Manolo Fortiche Agricultural Council to Enhance Food Security, Economic Development for Farmers, Environmental Sustainability, and Climate Resiliency", with a technical working group defining their compositions and functions, authored by the Honorable Raquel Abalas Bayakag and Honorable Elsie Vera A. Dagunlay.
I move to refer this to the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations and Committee on Agriculture.
Refer to the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations and Committee on Agriculture.
Next item is the proposed resolution number 2025-443B-P of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled, "Resolution Formerly Requesting the Honorable Senator Juan Miguel F. Zubiri to Allocate Funds Amounting to 81,500,000 pesos for the Concreting and or Rehabilitation of the 1.63 kilometer diversion road, Alaif Phillips Secondary Road connecting to Balubal Kagayandi Oro City." This is authored by the Honorable Reynaldo Elbagayas Jr., Honorable Elsie Vera A. Dagunlay, Honorable Rena A. Kinio, Honorable Joy Lavizores Cordovess, Honorable Raquel Abalas Bayakag, Honorable Kristy Liparto Salabi, Honorable Alex D. Payangga, Honorable Mary Jane P. Gilian, and Honorable Princess CJ B. Padin.
I move to transfer this to the business of the day as item 1A.
Transfer to item 1A.
Fourth item is the proposed resolution number 2025-444B-P of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled, "Resolution Formerly Requesting the Honorable Senator Juan Miguel F. Zubiri to Allocate Funds Amounting to 20 million pesos for the Construction of a Multipurpose Building in Barangay Tangkulan, Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon", authored by the Honorable Reynaldo Elbagayas Jr., Honorable Elsie Vera A. Dagunlay, Honorable Rena A. Kinio, Honorable Joy Lavizores Cordovess, Honorable Raquel Abalas Bayakag, Honorable Kristy Liparto Salabi, Honorable Alex D. Payangga, Honorable Mary Jane P. Gilian, and Honorable Princess CJ B. Padin.
I move to transfer this to the business of the day as item 1B.
Transfer to item 1B.
Fifth item is the proposed resolution number 2025-445B-P of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled, "Resolution Formerly Requesting the Honorable Senator Juan Miguel F. Zubiri to Allocate Funds Amounting to 19 million pesos for the Construction of a Road from Sitio Bagalangito, Kalugmanan proper, Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon", authored by the Honorable Reynaldo Elbagayas Jr., Honorable Elsie Vera A. Dagunlay, Honorable Rena A. Kinio, Honorable Joy Lavizores Cordovess, Honorable Raquel Abalas Bayakag, Honorable Kristy Liparto Salabi, Honorable Alex D. Payangga, Honorable Mary Jane P. Gilian, and Honorable Princess CJ B. Padin.
I move to transfer this to the business of the day as item 1C.
Transfer to item 1C.
Next item is the proposed resolution number 2025-446B-P of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled, "Resolution Formerly Requesting the Honorable Senator Juan Miguel F. Zubiri to Allocate Funds Amounting to 19 million pesos for the Construction of a Water Supply System connecting Barangay Dahilayan and Barangay Kalugmanan, Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon", authored by the Honorable Reynaldo Elbagayas Jr., Honorable Elsie Vera A. Dagunlay, Honorable Rena A. Kinio, Honorable Joy Lavizores Cordovess, Honorable Raquel Abalas Bayakag, Honorable Kristy Liparto Salabi, Honorable Alex D. Payangga, Honorable Mary Jane P. Gilian, and Honorable Princess CJ B. Padin.
I move to transfer this to the business of the day as item 1D.
Transfer to item 1D.
Seventh item is the proposed resolution number 2025-447B-P of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled, "Resolution Formerly Requesting the Honorable Senator Juan Miguel F. Zubiri to Allocate Funds Amounting to 28 million pesos for the Off Carriage Way Improvement, paving of shoulders along Dahilayan Road, Barangay Dahilayan, Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon", authored by the Honorable Reynaldo Elbagayas Jr., Honorable Elsie Vera A. Dagunlay, Honorable Rena A. Kinio, Honorable Joy Lavizores Cordovess, Honorable Raquel Abalas Bayakag, Honorable Kristy Liparto Salabi, Honorable Alex D. Payangga, Honorable Mary Jane P. Gilian, and Honorable Princess CJ B. Padin.
I move to transfer this to the business of the day as item 1E.
Transfer to item 1E.
Next item is the proposed resolution number 2025-448B-P of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled, "Resolution Congratulating and Commending Ms. Cassandra Fitzie Sanchez Payangga for Successfully Completing Her Competency Requirements for a Full Qualification in Trainer's Methodology for Pharmacist and for Becoming a Testa Qualified Assessor", authored by the Honorable Raquel Abalas Bayakag.
I move to transfer this to the business of the day as item 1F.
Transfer to item 1F.
Ninth item is the proposed resolution number 2025-449B-P of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled, "Resolution Congratulating and Commending Mr. Joey Tagupayakyak of Damilag, Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon for Successfully Graduating with a Degree of Master of Government Management at COC Finma Kagayandi Oro City on October 25, 2025", authored by the Honorable Raquel Abalas Bayakag.
I move to transfer this to the business of the day as item 1G.
Transfer to item 1G.
Tenth item is the proposed resolution number 2025-450B-P of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled, "Resolution Congratulating and Commending Ms. Katrina Sanchez Payangga for Successfully Completing Her Competency Requirements for a Full Qualification in Trainer's Methodology for Caregiving and for Becoming a Testa Qualified Assessor", authored by the Honorable Raquel Abalas Bayakag.
I move to transfer this to the business of the day as item 1H.
Transfer to item 1H.
Eleventh item is the proposed resolution number 2025-451B-P of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled, "Resolution Congratulating and Commending Ms. Lailani Melissios Anhuan for Successfully Completing Her Competency Requirements for a Full Qualification in Trainer's Methodology for Housekeeping and for Becoming a Testa Qualified Assessor", authored by the Honorable Raquel Abalas Bayakag.
I move to transfer this to the business of the day as item 1I.
Transfer to item 1I.
Next item is a proposed resolution number 2025-452B-P of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled, "Resolution Congratulating and Commending Mr. Jevi Kagatin, a Resident of Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon, for Being Awarded as a Champion of the 80 Kilometer Datu Salumay Invitational Trail Run", held last November 8, 2025 in Datu Salumay, Marilog District, Davao City, authored by the Honorable Rena A. Kinio.
I move to transfer this to the business of the day as item 1J.
Transfer to item 1J.
Thirteenth item is the proposed resolution number 2025-453B-P of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled, "Resolution Congratulating and Commending Ms. Aliana Faith R. Caballero, RND, for Being Confirmed the 2024 Region 10 Outstanding Municipal Nutrition Program Coordinator Award by the National Nutrition Council Region 10", authored by the Honorable Joy Lavizores Cordovess.
I move to transfer this to the business of the day as item 1K.
Transfer to item 1K.
Next item is the proposed resolution number 2025-454B-P of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled, "Resolution Congratulating and Commending Mrs. Stephanie A. Pipito, RND, for Winning the Best News Article Award for her article entitled, 'Conduct of Nutrition Caravan 2025 at Barangay Maluko', during the VI Regional Nutri Webby Awards organized by the National Nutrition Council Region 10, held on November 6, 2025 at Limkit Kailax Hotel, Kagayandi Oro City", authored by the Honorable Joy Lavizores Cordovess.
I move to transfer this to the business of the day as item 1L.
Transfer to item 1L.
Fifteenth item is the proposed resolution number 2025-455B-P of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled, "Resolution Congratulating and Commending the Municipal Nutrition Action Office for Having Been Confirmed the Nutrition Honor Award, Award of Merit by the National Nutrition Council Region 10, during the 2025 Regional Nutrition Awarding Ceremony held on November 6, 2025 at Limkit Kailax Hotel, Kagayandi Oro City", authored by the Honorable Joy L. Cordovess.
I move to transfer this to the business of the day as item 1M.
Transfer to item 1M.
Next item is the proposed resolution number 2025-456B-P of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled, "Resolution Commending the Municipal Nutrition Action Office for Winning Third Place in the VI Regional Nutri Webby Awards by the National Nutrition Council Region 10", authored by the Honorable Joy Lavizores Cordovess.
I move to transfer this to the business of the day as item 1N.
Transfer to item 1N.
Seventeenth item is the proposed resolution number 2025-457B-P of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled, "Resolution Congratulating and Commending the Municipal Nutrition Action Office for Winning First Place for the Highest Number of Articles Submitted and First Place for the Highest Number of Unique Contents during the VI Regional Nutri Webby Awards organized by the National Nutrition Council Region 10", authored by the Honorable Joy Lavizores Cordovess.
I move to transfer this to item 1O.
Transfer to item 1O.
Eighteenth item is the ordinance number 007-2025 of Barangay Tangkulan entitled, "An Ordinance Regulating Individuals from Roaming in Public Places Half-Naked or Indecently Dressed within the Territorial Jurisdiction of Barangay Tangkulan, Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon, and Providing Penalties Therefore."
I move to refer this to the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations and Committee on Barangay Affairs.
Refer to the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations and Barangay Affairs.
Next item are barangay ordinances from Barangay Minzuro. First is a barangay ordinance number 1, series of 2025 of Barangay Minzuro entitled, "An Ordinance Converting the Old Barangay Hall of the Barangay Local Government Unit of Minzuro into a Barangay Health Center and for Other Purposes." Second is the barangay ordinance number 2, series of 2025 of Barangay Minzuro entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing Regulation for Ecological Solid Waste Management of Barangay Minzuro and Requiring All Households to Dispose of their Waste during the Scheduled Monthly Collection, Providing Penalties for Non-Compliance and for Other Purposes." Third is a barangay ordinance number 3, series of 2025 of Barangay Minzuro entitled, "An Ordinance Implementing Road Clearing Operations and Regulating Obstructions Along Barangay Roads, Sidewalks, and Disments in Barangay Minzuro, Municipality of Manolo Fortiche, Province of Bukidnon." Fourth, barangay ordinance number 4, series of 2025 of barangay Minzuro entitled, "An Ordinance Imposing Curfew Hours for All Ages Within the Territorial Jurisdiction of Barangay Minzuro, Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon, and Providing Penalties for Violation thereof." Sixth is the barangay ordinance number 5, series of 2025 of barangay Minzuro entitled, "An Ordinance Regulating Stray Dogs and Other Stray Animals within the Territorial Jurisdiction of Barangay Minzuro, Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon, providing penalties for violation thereof and for other purposes." Sixth is the barangay ordinance number 6, series of 2025 of barangay Minzuro entitled, "An Ordinance Imposing Taxes, Fees, and Charges Pursuant to the Provisions of the Local Government Code and Providing Penalty for Violation thereof." Seventh is a barangay ordinance number 7, series of 2025 of barangay Minzuro entitled, "An Ordinance Regulating the Operation and Management of the Child Development Center for the Children Ages From Zero to Four Years Old in Barangay Minzuro, Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon." Eighth is the barangay ordinance number 8, series of 2025 of barangay Minzuro entitled, "An Ordinance Imposing Penalties on Acts Causing Disturbance to Peace and Order in the Barangay." Ninth is the barangay ordinance number 7, series of 2025 of barangay Minzuro entitled, "An Ordinance Regulating the Use and Operation of Videokey, Karaoke Machines, and Other Similar Amplified Audio-Sound Devices Within the Residential Areas and Providing Penalties for Violation thereof and for Other Purposes." Tenth is a barangay ordinance number 10, series of 2025 of barangay Minzuro entitled, "An Ordinance Prohibiting the Act of Being Topless or Going Half-Naked in Public Places within the Territorial Jurisdiction of Barangay Minzuro and Providing Penalties for Violation thereof." Eleventh is a barangay ordinance number 7, series of 2025 of barangay Minzuro entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing a Comprehensive River Health Management Program for Taguluwan River to Protect, Conserve, and Enhance Its Ecological Integrity and Water Quality."
I move to refer this to the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations, Committee on Barangay Affairs, Committee on Infrastructure, Committee on Environmental Protection and Ecology, and Committee on Peace and Order.
Refer to the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations, Barangay Affairs, Infrastructure, Environmental Protection and Ecology, and Peace and Order. and Peace and Order.
Next item are the barangay ordinances of Barangay Santunino. First is the barangay ordinance number 2025-003 of Barangay Santunino, entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing Guidelines for the Development, Management, and Preservation of the Barangay Tree Park Located in Zone 5, Ogaong Santunino, Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon, and for Other Related Purposes." Second is the ordinance number 2025-004 of Barangay Santunino, entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing Regulations for the Ecological Solid Waste Management of Barangay Santunino, Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon." Third is the ordinance number 2025-005 of Barangay Santunino, entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing a Curfew for Minors in Barangay Santunino, Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon, to Protect Them from Crimes and to Promote Their Safety." Fourth is the proposed ordinance number 2025-006 of Barangay Santunino, entitled, "An Ordinance Regulating the Sale, Access, and Consumption of Alcoholic Beverages in Public Places Within the Territorial Jurisdiction of Barangay Santunino, Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon."
I move to refer this to the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations, Committee on Barangay Affairs, Committee on Environmental Protection and Ecology, Committee on Peace and Order.
Refer to the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations, Barangay Affairs, Environmental Protection and Ecology, and Peace and Order.
Next item is the barangay resolution number 2025-2025 of Barangay Tangkulan, entitled, "A Resolution Requesting the Local Government Unit of Manolo Fortiche through the Municipal Social Welfare and Development Office to Help the Barangay and to Take Appropriate Action Regarding a Person with Special Needs and Badjao Roaming Within the Jurisdiction of Barangay Tangkulan."
I move to refer this to the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations, Committee on Barangay Affairs, Committee on Peace and Order.
Refer to the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations, Committee on Barangay Affairs, and Committee on Peace and Order.
First item under Communications is a letter of November 11, 2025, addressed to this August body. Dear Honorable Members, This is to respectfully endorse to your end a copy of the letter from the undersigned and addressed to Honorable Juan Miguel Miggs F. Subiri, requesting for assistance in securing funding, support for the following projects with a total amount of 238,500 pesos, to wit: One, Construction of multipurpose building at Barangay Tangkulan, Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon; Two, Construction of road, Sitio Bagalangi to Kalugmanan proper; Three, Off-carriageway improvement along Dahilayan Road; Four, Construction of water supply system, Dahilayan to Kalugmanan; Five, Concreting and Rehabilitation of 1.63 Kilometer diversion road, Alai to Phillips Secondary Road connecting Balubal. Relative thereto, the undersigned respectfully requests this August body to pass a resolution requesting the Honorable Juan Miguel Subiri to allocate funds for the aforementioned proposed projects. Thank you and respectfully yours, Signed, Ruhelio N. Kinio, Municipal Mayor.
I move to transfer this to the business of the day as item 1P.
Can we just have this noted since we have already addressed the concern of the Honorable Mayor to pass a resolution?
Okay, Mr. Presiding, this is noted.
So noted.
Second item is a letter dated November 6, 2025, addressed to the Honorable Members of the Sanggunian. Through the Honorable Vice Mayor Reynaldo Elbagayas Jr., Sir, greetings. I am writing to respectfully request the authority of the Honorable Sangguniang Bayan through a resolution to authorize the undersigned to implement the ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Creating the Municipal Veterinary Office, Its Organizational Structure, Staffing Pattern, and Creation of Positions and for Other Purposes." This initiative aims to institutionalize the establishment of the municipal veterinary office to effectively deliver essential veterinary and animal health services, promote livestock development, prevent and control animal diseases, and ensure public health and food safety within the municipality. The creation of this office will strengthen our capacity to safeguard the welfare of both animals and the community, particularly the agricultural sector, which remains a vital component of our local economy. Through the establishment of its organizational structure and staffing pattern, we intend to professionalize and operationalize the office with qualified personnel who will implement programs and services aligned with national and local development priorities. This effort is envisioned to contribute a sustainable livestock production, increase farmers' income, and overall economic resilience of the municipality. In view of the foregoing, I respectfully seek the approval and support of the Honorable Sangguniang Bayan for this endeavor. Respectfully yours, Signed, Ruhelio N. Kinio, Municipal Mayor.
I move to refer this to the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations, Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations, and Committee on Civil Service.
Refer to the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations, Finance, Budget, and Appropriation, and Civil Service.
Third item is a letter dated November 6, 2025, addressed to this August body. Dear Honorable SB Members, Respectfully endorsing to the Sangguniang Bayan the Memorandum of Agreement by and between the Local Government of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon, represented herein by the Municipal Mayor Ruhelio N. Kinio, and herein referred to as a first party, and the Happy Home Foundation Incorporated, represented herein by its Administrator, Julita V. Cerroales, MCM, referred to as a second party. Relative to this, the undersigned is respectfully requesting the August body to authorize the undersigned to enter into the same, anticipating with thanks for your consideration and urgent appropriate action in this matter. Very truly yours, Signed, Ruhelio N. Kinio, Municipal Mayor.
I move to transfer this to the business of the day as item 1P.
Transfer to item 1P.
Fourth item is a letter from the Office of the Punong Barangay of Barangay Mambatangan, addressed to this August body, subject of which is a follow-up on the scheduling of the joint session regarding the jurisdictional matters. Dear Honorable Members of the Sangguniang Bayan of Manolo Fortiche through Honorable Reynaldo Budjun Bagayas Jr., Greetings of peace and goodwill. On behalf of the Barangay Council of Mambatangan, we would like to respectfully follow up regarding the joint session scheduled with Sangguniang Bayan of Manolo Fortiche, the Department of the Interior and Local Government, the ILG, and the Barangay Alai. This follow-up pertains to the discussions that took place during the meeting held last August, held last August 26, 2025, at the Sangguniang Bayan Conference Room, concerning an area that was originally under the jurisdiction of Barangay Mambatangan, but was subsequently donated to Barangay Alai. During the said joint meeting, it was acknowledged, as per the records, that the Sangguniang Barangay of Alai concurred that the location in question was within the jurisdiction of Barangay Mambatangan. However, the matter remains unresolved regarding the Barangay Local Government Unit shall assume responsibility for providing services and overseeing the management of the area and property. This unresolved issue continues to require formal clarification to ensure that the appropriate barangay LGU is designated to manage the area in question and address the needs of the community residing therein. In this regard, we kindly request the scheduling of a follow-up joint session to further discuss and resolve this matter. It is crucial to establish a clear understanding of the jurisdictional responsibilities and service obligations of the respective barangays involved, as this will help prevent any future confusion or conflicts related to governance and administration. We appreciate your attention to this matter and respectfully request that a suitable date for the joint session be set at your earliest convenience. Should you require any additional information or documentation from the Barangay Council of Mambatangan, we are more than willing to provide the necessary support. Thank you for your cooperation and prompt consideration. We look forward to your favorable reply. Respectfully yours, signed, Edward D. Dampal, Punong Barangay.
I move to refer this to the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulation, Committee on Land Use, and Committee on Barangay Affairs.
Refer to the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations, Land Use, and Barangay Affairs.
Next item are the, is a letter from the Commission on Audit, are the audit reports from the COA of the following barangays for the calendar years that ended on December 31, 2021 to December 31, 2024. The barangays are the Barangay Agusan Canyon, Barangay Damilag, Barangay Deklom, Barangay Gilang-Gilang, Barangay Mambatangan, Barangay Mampayag, Barangay Mantibugaw, and Barangay San Miguel.
Um, this is noted, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Well, in the first place, why are we being furnished a copy? Is it stated? Ganun kita gaantana? Furnish lang? Ah, okay. So let's have that noted. And maybe, uh, forward that to the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriation for review.
The next item is a DILG message. Subject is the dissemination of memorandum circular number 2025-110, the suspension of official and unofficial foreign travel of elected and appointed local government officials, covering the period November 9 to 15, 2025.
Um, this is noted, Mr. Presiding Officer.
So noted. Hey, excuse me, can we read that into the record? The message of the DILG?
The message is, "We are forwarding you here with the DILG memorandum number 2025-110, signed by the Secretary Juanito Victor C. Remulia, regarding the above-mentioned subject. In relation to this, please note of the following guidelines: Suspension of Foreign Travel."
Foreign, huh?
"All official and unofficial foreign travel by elected and appointed local officials covered under this circular for the period of November 9 to 15, 2025, are hereby suspended except for travels deemed absolutely necessary for urgent and critical government, business related to disaster response, relief, and mitigation, subject to prior approval by the DILG Secretary and the Office of the President. Travels related to national security, public health, or humanitarian emergencies directly related to typhoons, tino, and uwan, as certified by the relevant government agency." Next is the revocation of issued foreign travel authorities. "All previously issued foreign travel authorities with travel periods covering November 9 to 15 are hereby revoked and rendered ineffective. Return of elected officials on foreign travel. All elected officials on travel abroad are directed to immediately return to their respective local government units. To reiterate, pending applications lodged in the system for travel covering the period November 9 to 15, 2025, shall be denied and returned to the applicant. Kindly refer to the attached memorandum for further details for your information and widest dissemination." Rona Pedraza Abadilla, Provincial Director, by the authority of the Provincial Director Glenda A. Hope Billy Clusterhead.
So that's only for foreign travel, okay? Then I'll have that noted.
Next item is a letter of October 28 from the Northern Mindanao Gospel Team of Fundamental Baptist Churches. "Sir, Madam, Merry Christmas. The Northern Mindanao Gospel Team of Fundamental Baptist Churches will be coming up with a Christmas musical entitled 'Voices of Christmas', arranged by Tom Fett and directed by Mr. Crispulo G. Vidad, featuring the NMG TFBC Mixed Choir, young voices, solo, duet, praise team, congregation, narrators, and local actors for dramatic monologues. This will be held on December 19, 2025, 5:30 in the afternoon at the Municipal Gymnasium, Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon. Subsequently, we will be coming up with a souvenir publication. With this, we would like to request if you can possibly be one of our sponsors for the souvenir publication we would like to put up. Proceeds will be used for printing and other expenditures of the event, and the rest will be used for its mission work. Your positive response to this undertaking will be very much appreciated. If amenable to this request, kindly send us your greetings or ads to be printed in souvenir publication on or before November 25, 2025. Very sincerely yours, Dennis G. Tanaman, Chairman, Souvenir Publication Committee."
This is noted, Mr. Presiding Officer.
So noted.
Now let's proceed to the committee reports for the committee of the whole. Uh, committee report number 2025-075B. Shall I call the, shall I sponsor this, Mr. Presiding Officer, or I call the author?
It's up to you.
Okay, I'd like to call the author to read the committee report.
The Honorable Di Bata?
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, and thank you, Madam Majority of the floor leader. Committee Report Number 2025-075B, to which was referred, is the proposed ordinance of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled, "An Ordinance Regulating the Use of Vehicle Horns During Official Class Hours in School Zones Within the Municipality of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon to Promote a Conducive Learning Environment." This is authored by your story. On attendance were Mrs. Berhelia O. Pancha, SP2, Mr. Reni Bagogon, Teacher 2, of Manolo Fortiche Central Elementary School, Mr. Dante Almihai, Principal 1, Manolo Fortiche District 3, and Mr. Justado, Essential, MFRT head. One, upon the discussion of the said subject matter, the Sanggunian hereby notes, "Honorable Miguel D. Di Mata emphasized the salient points of ordinance particularly in Section 6 Enforcement. The implementation of the enforcement of this ordinance shall be carried out by the Manolo Fortiche Roads and Traffic Administration in coordination with the designated barangay tunnels within their respective jurisdictions and the Manolo Fortiche Municipal Police Station." The MFRT hereby empower to: A, issue citation tickets to violators; B, monitor and patrol school zones during official hours, official class hours; C, conduct information dissemination campaigns to educate motorists and the public on the provisions of this ordinance; D, maintain a database of violators for proper recording and reference in case of repeat offenses. Section 7, Installation of Signades. The Manolo Fortiche Roads and Traffic Administration in coordination with the Department of Education and the Barangay Local Government Unit shall, units shall ensure the installation and maintenance of clear and visible signades indicating the prohibition of horn use within 50 meters of all designated school zones, school zones. These signs shall be strategically placed at all entry points along the boundaries of school zones to effectively inform motorists of the restriction during official class hours. Mr. Justado, and Central, MFRT, he had mentioned that the aforementioned sections have already been indicated in ordinance 2012-847, Article 24, Section 151, Use of Horns Warning Instruments, providing the following: One, Provision: No person shall use the cost or cause to be used the horn or any other warning instrument on a vehicle except when necessary, as a traffic warning or as indicate that the driver of the vehicle intends to overtake another vehicle. Place of worship. No driver shall blow its horn within 50 meters from any established place of worship in the Municipality of Manolo Fortiche during Sundays, during Sundays and other established religious holidays and while said religious services are being performed. School. No driver of any motor vehicle shall blow its horn within 50 meters from a school building during day or night classes. Signs. Before signs, the Traffic Division of Manolo Fortiche Police Command is authorized to post the necessary signs in the areas concerned. The temporary signages may be available with a DPW clearance, clearance, and an approval from the Governor, especially at provincial roads and schools. The issuance of citation ticket shall issue, shall ensure, as stipulated on ordinance number 2012-847. Section 23, International Road Sign Standard. All traffic signs to be installed within the limits of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon shall conform with the International Road Sign Standard indicating the ordinance and/or executive order number that mandates the installation. Section 24, Limits on Operations of Signs. Any sign associated with no parking area, no waiting area, or parking area, or any sign of kind refrigerant shall be limited in its operation and effect. shall be limited in its operation and effect in respect of days, periods of the day, classes of vehicles, or circumstances to the extent shown on the sign. Section... That in Section 185, fines and penalties are first offense... Penalties are: First offense, 1,500; Second offense, 2,000; and the third offense is 2,500. Discussion transpired on the following: That the MFRT cannot confiscate the driver's license but can report the said violation to the LTO or the LTFRB. That only those caught in the act will be apprehended. If reported, the one who made the report shall present his or her as witness such occurrence and can be done anytime. That there are five barangay tunnels deputized at barangay highways authorized by the MFRT to enact in behalf of them. That the MFRT should prioritize regulating the blowing of horns near the school, especially during the class hours to mitigate noise disturbance. That the school has the right to regulate private vehicle entry if they wish to establish a specific drop-off pick-up location, they may, as long as it is deemed safe. That it is in the school's jurisdictions to impose a gate pass for their safety. That the school administrators present express support to the subject ordinance. That contact numbers from PNP, MFRT, and Rescue are posted for everyone's perusal. That the advisories would be done through information dissemination through Facebook, Radio Station, and Lifelets, and that whenever there would be a signage installation, all constituents would be given a one-to-two weeks' period for familiarization. Three, Other Matters Raised. Other Matters Raised Were: To immediately install pedestrian crossing signages near the Manolo Fortis Central Elementary School as this lane is heavily utilized by both elementary and and high school students accessing the terminal and other areas. To design and install larger, more visible signages to enhance motorist awareness, ensuring compliance with the set standards. To regulate mobile... What is this? Bakeries? Bakeries? Bakeries?
Bakeries.
Bakeries? To regulate mobile bakeries and other vendors to not use loud sound system or cause... Ay, oo, katung-katung karitun? Use loud sound system or cause excessive noise during official class hours to prevent disturbance. The regulation, as per Honorable Alex D. Payanga's point, should be informed to the vendors as a way of acknowledging their livelihood but should still proceed to prioritize students' right to a conducive learning environment. To request the MFRT to start their duty earlier in the morning to effectively manage the initial peak traffic flow and crucial morning drop-off period of students. Of the storage recommendation for the proposed ordinance... What is this? Okay. Recommendation for the proposed ordinance: To include the subject ordinance, the design of the signades, its details consistent with Republic Act Number 4136. For crowded streets and school approaches, signades should clearly display the speed limit for clarity. To consider in the universal definition of school zones, generally to be used in all ordinances if applicable. For final recommendation, on motion of the Honorable Miguel Didi Mata and unanimously seconded by the members present, the proposed ordinance of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled "An Ordinance Regulating the Use of Vehicle Horns During Official Class Hours and School Zones Within the Municipality of Manolo Fortis Bukidnon to Promote a Conducive Learning System" was approved on the committee level, subject to amendments. Mr. Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of this committee report number 2025-075B.
There's a motion for the approval of committee report number 2025-075B with regards to the approval of ordinance regulating the use of vehicle horns during official class hours in school zones within the Municipality of Manolo Fortis Bukidnon to promote conducive learning environment. Any second?
Second.
Any comments? The Honorable Pejanga?
Uh... Yes, Mr. Presiding Officer. Just a simple clarification, Mr. Presiding Officer, because we have already an ordinance on 2012-847. So, our ordinance is... Nagmando dito that the traffic, our municipal traffic authority... Na sa atong ordinance ang kita wag nila nga kani ang horn. Nagyapon diha. So, my question is: Dilibag ka magduplikit ang atong mga ordinances relative to our traffic koordinance? May basin o magduplikit, maglisod, unyak implement ang atong MRTE? So, I think I would like to request our researchers and our secretary to research, to research basig na duplication before we finalize this ordinance. That's all, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Pejanga. Any comment from the proponent?
The proponent, okay. By the way, noted, Mr. Presiding Officer. Anyway, Mr. Assistant is nagmention naman po nga na i-ordinance atong 2012-847, but wala niya ma-explain ng sakto na ano ba yun yun nakastipulate ang uh, gimention ni Councilor Pejanga?
Okay, just for the satisfaction of the Honorable Pejanga, to our researchers, please make a comparative...
Parang din magduplikit ang atong...
Oh, comparative lang siya para may balanatong kung nagduplikit ba gitsa or nagreinforce ba?
Yes.
Just the ano lang. So, may request the researchers to make a comparative regards to the proposed ordinance and the already established ordinance, traffic, the traffic ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Chair. But just the same, can we... Um... Are there any comments with regards to the approval of this ordinance? So, we will just take note of that, Honorable Pejanga, and prior to or before the second reading, we will present that to the plenary. Okay? So, the committee report number 2020... 5-075 is now approved, subject to some clarifications.
For committee report number 2025-076B, allow me to sponsor this, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Okay, go ahead.
The committee of the whole, to which was referred, subject resolution number 2025-484 of the Sangguniang Panalawigan Bukidnon, entitled: "A Resolution Adapting the Proposed Map of Six Legislative Districts of the Province of Bukidnon in Support of the Earlier Sangguniang Panalawigan Resolution Number 2025-004", transpired during the committee hearing were as follows: That the proposed map of the six legislative districts was in support of the Sangguniang Panalawigan Resolution Number 2025-004, entitled: "A Resolution Expressing Full Support of the Sangguniang Panalawigan of Bukidnon for the Redistricting of Province of Bukidnon from four to six legislative districts, and urging Congress to enact law, therefore subdivided into: First District, Malitbog, Manolo Fortis, Sumilau, Libuna, and Baungon; Second District will be Impasugong, Malebalay City, and Kabanglasan; for the Third District, Maramag and Quezon; for the Fourth District will be Valencia City and San Fernando; District Five will be Don Carlos, Dankhagan, Kitautau, Kibawi, Kadengilan, and Damulog; for District Six will be Lantapan, Talakag, Pangantukan, and Kaliliangan". That the said subject matter was already discussed and consulted with the mayors and their representatives. The map was adopted without objection. After due deliberation, it was then approved by the Sangguniang Panalawigan members. Final recommendations on motion of yours truly, duly seconded by all the members present, the resolution expressing support of the proposed map of six legislative districts of the province of Bukidnon in support of the earlier Sangguniang Panalawigan Resolution Number 2025-484 was approved in the committee level. It was all signed by all the members present, Mr. Presiding Officer. I move for the approval of this committee report.
So there's a motion for the approval of committee report number 2025-076B with regards to the resolution adapting the proposed map of the six legislative districts of the province of Bukidnon in support of the earlier Sangguniang Panalawigan Resolution Number 2025-004. Any second?
Second, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Any comments? Hiring none, motion is approved.
For the committee report number 2025-077B, allow me again to sponsor this item, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Okay, go ahead.
This is the Joint Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations and Committee on Civil Service, to which was referred, the subject letter of October 30, 2025, signed by the municipal mayor, requesting approval for the creation of various plantilla positions in the LGU Manolo Fortis for calendar year 2026. Honorable Kristi Liparto Salabi, Chairman of the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations, presented the subject matter. The request contains the following: That there are 23 plantilla position to be created for various offices under the local government unit of Manolo Fortis. That the positions are already incorporated in the annual budget for the calendar year 2026, already enacted by the Sangguniang on October 30, 2025. That the proposed listed positions are properly titled per Civil Service Commission Position Index. It was confirmed that all proposed plantilla positions have undergone a thorough review to ensure no redundancy exists within the organizational structure. Final recommendation on the motion of yours truly, duly seconded by all the members present, the letter of October 30, 2025, signed by the municipal mayor, requesting approval for the creation of various plantilla position in the LGU Manolo Fortis calendar year 2026 was approved at the committee level. So with this, Mr. Presiding Officer, I move for its approval.
So there's a motion for the approval of committee report number 2025-077B regarding the approval for the creation of various plantilla positions in the LGU Manolo Fortis for calendar year 2026. Any second? Any comments? Hearing none, the motion is approved.
For the committee report number 2025-078B, the Joint Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations and the Committee on Barangay Affairs, to which was referred, subject and ordinance number 01-2025 of Barangay Dahilayan, entitled: "An Ordinance Mandating All Private Landowners to Clean and Maintain Their Parcells of Land Within 15 Meters From the Shoulder of Provincial and Barangay Roads in accordance with the Public Act, Republic Act Number 9003, Ecological Solid Waste Management Act of 2000, and Providing Penalties for Noncompliance thereof." Honorable Kristi Liparto Salabi, Committee Chairman on Laws, Rules, and Regulations, presented the findings and review of the subject by Barangay Ordinance as follows: The local government code grants the Barangay the power to enact ordinances necessary to promote the general welfare of their inhabitants, including the promotion of health and safety, the maintenance of public order, and preservation of a balanced environment. The Barangay can legally compel private landowners to clean their areas as a valid exercise of its police power for the general welfare of the community. However, in Section 6, penalties provide the impositions of the community service which is not expressly provided by the local government code. Hence, the Joint Committees recommended to return the subject ordinance to its point of origin for amendment through deletion of the community service as an accompanying penalty for the violation of the subject ordinance. Final recommendation on motion of yours truly and unanimously seconded by all the members present, the ordinance number 01-2025 of Barangay Dahilayan, entitled: "An Ordinance Mandating All Private Landowners to Clean and Maintain Their Parcells of Land Within 15 Meters From the Shoulder of Provincial and Barangay Roads in accordance with Republic Act 9003, Ecological Solid Waste Management Act of 2000, and Providing Penalties for Noncompliance thereof would be returned to its point of origin as recommended." Signed by all the members present, Mr. Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of this committee report.
So there's a motion for the approval of committee report number 2025-078B regarding the ordinance mandating all private landowners to clean and maintain their parcel of lands within 15 meters from the shoulder of provincial and barangay roads in accordance with the Republic Act Number 9003, and providing penalties for noncompliance thereof. This is the ordinance number 1, 2025, Barangay Dahilayan, will be returned to its point of origin. So any second?
Second, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Any comments? Hearing none, the motion is approved.
Next committee report is the Joint Committee Report Number 2025-079B, Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations and Committee on Barangay Affairs, subject ordinance number 02, 2025, of the Office of the Barangay IPMR of Lindaban, entitled: "An Ordinance Changing the Celebration Date of the Annual Anlauta Lindaban from January 18 to 21 to every second week of March from Thursday to Sunday." Honorable Kristi Liparto Salabi, Committee Chairman on Laws, Rules, and Regulations, presented the findings and review of the subject Barangay Ordinance as follows: The ordinance was passed by the IPMR represented by the Council of Elders of the said Barangay. The enactment of ordinance is solidly vested on the authority of a legislative bodies: Sangguniang Panalawigan in the case of provinces, Sangguniang Panusod Bayan in case of the cities and municipalities, and Sangguniang Barangay in the case of barangays. It is not within the authority of the IPMR through the Council of Elders to enact the subject ordinance, that the subject ordinance is valid, invalid, and will have no force and effect. The Joint Committee recommended to return the subject ordinance to its point of origin for enactment of Barangay Council of Lindaban being the legislative body of the concerned Barangay. Final recommendation on the motion of yours truly and unanimously seconded by all of the members present, the ordinance number 02, 2025, of the Office of the Barangay IPMR of Lindaban, entitled: "An Ordinance Changing the Celebration Date of Annual Anlauta Lindaban from January 18 to 21 to every second week of March from Thursday to Sunday", was returned to its point of origin and recommended to endorse the subject ordinance to the Barangay Council of Lindaban for their consideration. So, signed by all the members present, Mr. Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of this committee report.
So there's a motion for the approval of committee report number 2025-079B regarding the ordinance changing the the ordinance of the IPMR of Lindaban, changing the celebration date of the annual anlauta Lindaban from January 18 to 21 to second week of March from Thursday to Sunday. We approve as recommended. Any second?
Second, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Any comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
The next item is a joint committee report number 2025-080B on Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations and Committee on Barangay Affairs. Subject: Resolution Number 57 of 2025 of Barangay Dahilayan entitled "A Resolution For The Cancellation Of The Proposed Barangay Road At Zone Two Junction To The Barangay Three Park And Declaring As The Relocation Site Area Of Barangay Dahilayan Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon." Honorable Kristi Liparto Salabi, Committee Chairman on Laws, Rules, and Regulations, presented the findings and review of the subject of barangay ordinances as follows: That the subject area is a government-owned property, that the barangay council has the authority to establish a plan for its barangay. The Joint Committee recommended to note the subject resolution considering that the authority of the barangay to pass the same. Final recommendation on motion of yours truly, and unanimously seconded by all of the members present, the Resolution Number 57 Series of 2025 of Barangay Dahilayan entitled "A Resolution For The Cancellation Of The Proposed Barangay Road At Zone Two Junction To The Barangay Three Park And Declaring As The Relocation Site Area Of Barangay Dahilayan Manolo Fortiche" was noted by the committee. So with this, Mr. and Mr. Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of the committee report.
So there's a motion for the approval of committee report number 2025-080 regarding the resolution for the cancellation of the proposed barangay road at Zone Two Junction To Barangay Three Park and declaring as the relocation site of barangay Dahilayan Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon. Any second?
Second, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Any comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
Now let's proceed to the calendar of business, Mr. Presiding Officer, for the unfinished business and for the business of the day.
Let's proceed to the third reading.
Third reading.
First item for third reading is the proposed ordinance number 2025-2276 of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled "An Ordinance Establishing Guidelines For The Grant Of Aid To Barangays In The Municipality Of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon And For Other Purposes", authored by the Honorable Ronaldo El Bagayas Jr. and co-authored by the Honorable Rina Ikinyo and Honorable Mary Jane P. Gilayan.
So for those who are in favor for the approval of the proposed ordinance number 2025-2276 on third and final reading, the ordinance establishing guidelines for grant of aid to barangays in the municipality of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon and for other purposes. So please raise your right hand. So it's nine out of nine, so the proposed ordinance number 2025-2276, the ordinance establishing guidelines for the grant of aid to barangays in the municipality of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon and for other purposes is now approved on third and final reading.
For the... okay, sir.
Second item is the proposed ordinance number 2025-2277 of the Sangguniang Bayan entitled "An Ordinance Establishing The Brand Identity Of The Municipality Of Manolo Fortiche In Alignment With Its Official Tagline, Lupad Manolo Fortiche And For Other Purposes", authored by the Honorable Rina Ikinyo.
So for those who are in favor for the approval of the proposed ordinance number 2025-2277 on third and final reading, the ordinance establishing the brand identity of the municipality of Manolo Fortiche in alignment with its official tagline, Lupad Manolo Fortiche and for other purposes, please raise your right hand. It's nine out of nine, so the proposed ordinance number 2025-2277, the ordinance establishing the brand identity of the municipality of Manolo Fortiche in alignment with its official tagline, Lupad Manolo Fortiche and for other purposes, is now approved on third and final reading.
Now let's proceed to the transferred item, Mr. Presiding Officer. For item 1A, B, C, D, and E, I'd like to call the committee chair, the committee vice chair on infrastructure, Consejal Edi Dagunlay to sponsor the item.
Honorable Dagunlay, sir.
Good morning, everyone. To our visitors and to our presiding officer. So, to the transferred item 1A, proposed resolution number 2025-443B, a resolution formally requesting the Honorable Senator Juan Miguel F. Subiri to allocate funds amounting to eighty-one million five hundred thousand pesos for the concreting and/or rehabilitation of the 1.63-kilometer diversion route from Alai Phillips Secondary Road concreting to Balubal Kagayan de Uru City. Authors: Honorable Ronaldo El Bagayas Jr., Honorable El Subiri Dagunlay, Honorable Rina Ikinyo, Honorable Joy El Cordobes DMD, Honorable Raquel Ibayakag, Honorable Kristi El Salabi, Honorable Alex Di Payanga, Honorable Mary Jean P. Gilayan, Honorable Princess CGB Padin. Whereas the local government unit of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon continues to prioritize infrastructure development projects that enhance accessibility, economic growth, and the general welfare of its constituents. Whereas the 1.3-kilometer diversion route, known as Alai Phillips Secondary Road connecting to Balubal Kagayan de Uru City, serve as vital alternate route, facilitating the transport of goods and movement to people between Bukidnon and Misamis Oriental. Whereas the existing road section has deteriorated due to wear and tear and requires immediate concreting and/or rehabilitation to ensure safer, faster, and more efficient transportation for residents, farmers, and local industries. Whereas the Honorable Senator Juan Miguel F. Subiri has consistently supported programs and projects that promote local development and improve public service delivery across the province of Bukidnon. Whereas, under Section 17 of the 1991 Local Government Code, the national government or the next higher level of local government unit may provide or augment the basic services and facilities assigned to a lower level of local government unit when such services or facilities are not made available or if made available are inadequate to meet the requirements of the inhabitants. Now therefore, on motion unanimously seconded by, be it resolved, as it is heard by resolve, by the 21st Sangguniang Bayan of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon, to formally request the Honorable Senator Juan Miguel F. Subiri to allocate funds amounting to eighty-one million five hundred thousand pesos for the concreting and rehabilitation of 1.63-kilometer diversion route Alai Phillips Secondary Road connecting to Balubal Kagayan de Uru City. Resolve further that a copy of this resolution be furnished to the office of the Honorable Senator Juan Miguel F. Subiri for his information and favorable action. Resolve finally that the copy of this resolution be likewise furnished to the Honorable Municipal Mayor Roelio Inkinyo for his information and reference. So for this, Mr. Presiding Officer, proposed resolution number 2025-443B, I move for the approval, Mr. Presiding Officer.
So there's a motion for the approval of the proposed resolution formally requesting the Honorable Senator Juan Miguel F. Subiri to allocate funds amounting to eighty-one million five hundred thousand for the concreting and rehabilitation of the 1.63-kilometer diversion road Alai Phillips Secondary Road connecting to Balubal Kagayan de Uru City. Any second?
Second.
Any comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
Another transferred item 1B, proposed resolution number 2025-4444B, a resolution formally requesting the Honorable Senator Juan Miguel F. Subiri to allocate funds amounting to twenty million pesos for the construction of multipurpose building in Barangay Tangkulan, Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon. Authors: Honorable Ronaldo El Bagayas Jr., Honorable El Subiri Dagunlay, Honorable Rina Ikinyo, Honorable Joy El Cordobes DMD, Honorable Raquel Ibayakag, Honorable Kristi El Salabi, Honorable Alex Di Payanga, Honorable Mary Jean P. Gilayan, Honorable Princess CGB Padin. Whereas the local government unit of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon continues to promote the welfare and development of its barangay through improvement of public facilities and infrastructure. Whereas barangay Tangkulan, being one of the highly populated and rapidly developing barangays in the municipality, is in need of multipurpose building that will serve as biño for various community activities, meetings, training sessions, and emergency operations. Whereas the construction of said multipurpose building will significantly enhance the delivery of basic services, strengthen community engagement and resilience. Whereas Honorable Senator Juan Miguel F. Subiri has consistently supported programs and projects that promote local government and improve public service delivery across the province of Bukidnon. Whereas, under Section 17 of 1991 Local Government Code, the national government of the next higher level of local government unit may provide or augment the basic services and facilities assigned a lower level of local government unit when such services or facilities are not made available or if made available are inadequate to meet the requirements of its inhabitants. Now therefore, on motion unanimously seconded, be it resolved, as it is heard by resolve, by the 21st Sangguniang Bayan of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon, to formally request the Honorable Senator Juan Miguel F. Subiri to allocate funds amounting to twenty-one million pesos for the construction of multipurpose building in Barangay Tangkulan, Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon. Resolve further that a copy of this resolution be furnished to the office of the Honorable Senator Juan Miguel F. Subiri for the information and favorable action. Resolve finally that a copy of this resolution be likewise furnished to the Honorable Municipal Mayor Roelio Inkinyo for his information and reference. So for this, Presiding Officer, I move for the approval for the proposed resolution number 2025-4444B, Mr. Presiding Officer.
So there's a motion for the approval of the proposed resolution formally requesting the Honorable Senator Juan Miguel F. Subiri to allocate funds amounting to twenty million pesos for the construction of a multipurpose building in Barangay Tangkulan, Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon. Any second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Presiding Officer.
Any comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
Another transferred item 1C, a proposed resolution number 2025-445B, a resolution formally requesting the Honorable Senator Juan Miguel F. Subiri to allocate funds amounting to ninety million pesos for the construction of a road from Sitio Bagalangit to Kalugmanan proper, Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon. Authors: Honorable Ronaldo El Bagayas Jr., Honorable El Subiri Dagunlay, Honorable Rina Ikinyo, Honorable Joy El Cordobes DMD, Honorable Raquel Ibayakag, Honorable Kristi El Salabi, Honorable Alex Di Payanga, Honorable Mary Jean P. Gilayan, Honorable Princess CGB Padin. Whereas the local government unit of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon recognizes the importance of improving local infrastructure to promote economic growth, enhance accessibility, and ensure the efficient delivery of basic services to its constituents. Whereas residents of Sitio Bagalangit and the surrounding areas have long experienced difficulty in transportation and limited access to essential goods and services due to poor condition and inaccessibility of existing roads. Whereas the proposed construction of road connecting Sitio Bagalangit to Kalugmanan proper will significantly improve mobility, promote local commerce and agricultural productivity, and contribute to the overall socioeconomic development of the municipality. Whereas Honorable Senator Juan Miguel F. Subiri has consistently supported programs and projects that promote local development and improve public service delivery across the province of Bukidnon. Whereas, under Section 17 of the 1991 Local Government Code, the national government of or the next higher level of local government unit may provide or augment the basic services and facilities assigned to a lower level of the local government unit when such services or facilities are not made available or if made available are inadequate to meet the requirements of its inhabitants. Now therefore, on motion unanimously seconded, be it resolved, as it is heard by resolve, by the 21st Sangguniang Bayan of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon, to formally request the Honorable Senator Juan Miguel F. Subiri to allocate funds amounting to ninety million pesos for the construction of the road from Sitio Bagalangit to Kalugmanan proper, Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon. Resolve further that a copy of this resolution be furnished to the office of the Honorable Senator Juan Miguel F. Subiri for the information and favorable action. Resolve finally that a copy of this resolution be likewise furnished to the Honorable Municipal Mayor Roelio Inkinyo for his information and reference. So, Mr. Presiding Officer, I propose... I move for the approval of the proposed resolution number 2025-445B, Mr. Presiding Officer.
So there's a motion for the approval of the proposed resolution formally requesting the Honorable Senator Juan Miguel F. Subiri to allocate funds amounting to ninety million pesos for the construction of the road from Sitio Bagalangit to Kalugmanan proper, Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon. Any second? Any comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
Another transferred item, Mr. Presiding Officer, 1D, proposed resolution number 2025-446B, a resolution formally requesting the Honorable Senator Juan Miguel F. Subiri to allocate funds amounting to nineteen million pesos for the construction of a water supply system connecting Barangay Dahilayan and Barangay Kalugmanan, Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon. Authors: Honorable Ronaldo El Bagayas Jr., Honorable El Subiri Dagunlay, Honorable Rina Ikinyo, Honorable Joy El Cordobes DMD, Honorable Raquel Ibayakag, Honorable Kristi El Salabi, Honorable Alex Di Payanga, Honorable Mary Jean P. Gilayan, Honorable Princess CGB Padin. Whereas the local government unit of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon recognizes the importance of improving reliable and sustainable access to potable water as a fundamental service essential to the health, sanitation, and economic well-being of its constituents. Whereas the residents of Barangay Dahilayan and Barangay Kalugmanan have long experienced limited access to an adequate and consistent water supply, resulting in difficulties and affect their daily lives, livelihoods, and overall quality of life. Whereas the proposed construction- Whereas the proposed construction of water supply system connecting barangay Deilayan and barangay Kalugmanan aims to address this pressing need by ensuring the equitable distribution of clean and safe water to both communities. Whereas Honorable Senator Juan Miguel E. Subiri has consistently supported programs and projects and promote local government and improve public service delivery across the province of Bukinon. Whereas under Section 17 of the 1991 Local Government Code, the national government or the next higher level of local government unit may provide or augment the basic services and facilities assigned to a lower level of local government unit when such services or facilities are not made available or if made available are inadequate to meet the requirements of its inhabitants. Now therefore on motion anonymously seconded be it resolved it is heard by resolve by the 21st Sangguniang Bayan of Manolo Fortiz Bukinon to formally request the Honorable Senator Juan Miguel E. Subiri to allocate funds amounting to 19 million for the construction of water supply system connecting barangay Deilayan and barangay Kalugmanan, Manolo Fortiz Bukinon. Resolve further that a copy of this resolution be furnished to the office of the Honorable Senator Juan Miguel E. Subiri for his information and favorable action. Resolve finally that a copy of this resolution be likewise furnished to the Honorable Municipal Mayor Rojelio N. Kinyo for his information and reference. So Mister Presiding Officer, I move for the approval for the proposed Resolution Number 2025-446B, Mister Presiding Officer.
So there's a motion for the approval of the proposed resolution formally requesting the Honorable Senator Juan Miguel E. Subiri to allocate funds amounting to 19 million for the construction of water supply system connecting barangay Deilayan and Kalugmanan, Manolo Fortiz Bukinon. Any second?
I second.
Any comments? Ringnan, the motion is approved.
Another transferred item Mister Presiding Officer 1E. Proposed Resolution Number 2025-447B. A resolution formally requesting the Honorable Senator Juan Miguel E. Subiri to allocate funds amounting to 28 million for the off-carriage way improvement, pavement of shoulders along Deilayan Road, barangay Deilayan, Manolo Fortiz Bukinon. So we observe nga gamay giganan kasada so atong padakan para nga mas daghan ang atong tourist ka mayo ang pag sulod. So authors: Honorable Ronaldo El Bagayas Jr., Honorable Elsever I Dagunlay, Honorable Rena I Kinyo, Honorable Joy L Cordobes DMD, Honorable Raquel I Bayakag, Honorable Kristi L Salabi, Honorable Alex D Payanga, Honorable Mary Jean P Gilayan, Honorable Princess CGB Padin. Whereas the local government unit of Manolo Fortiz Bukinon recognizes the importance of improving road infrastructure to ensure the safety, accessibility, and convenience of motorist residents and tourists alike. Whereas Deilayan Road serves as a vital access route leading to major agricultural areas and popular tourist destination within barangay Deilayan thereby contributing significantly to the local economy and tourism industry of Manolo Fortiz Bukinon. Whereas the existing road shoulders along Deilayan Road remain and pave pushing potential safety hazards to motorists and pedestrians hindering of efficient flow of vehicular traffic. Whereas the proposed off-carriage way improvement paving of road shoulders will enhance road safety, promote tourism, and support socioeconomic growth in barangay Deilayan and neighboring communities. Whereas Honorable Senator Juan Miguel E. Subiri has consistently supported programs and projects that promote local development and improve public service delivery across the province of Bukinon. Whereas Section 17 of the 1991 Local Government Code, the national government or the next higher level of local government unit may provide or augment the basic services and facilities assigned to a lower level of local government unit when such services or facilities are not made available or if made available are inadequate to meet the requirements of its inhabitants. Now therefore on motion anonymously seconded be it resolved as it is heard by resolve by the 21st Sangguniang Bayan of Manolo Fortiz Bukinon formally request the Honorable Senator Juan Miguel E. Subiri to allocate funds amounting to 28 million for the off-carriage way improvement paving of road shoulders along Deilayan Road barangay Deilayan on municipality of Manolo Fortiz, province of Bukinon. Resolve further that a copy of this resolution be furnished to the office of the Honorable Senator Juan Miguel E. Subiri for its information and favorable action. Resolve finally that a copy of this resolution be likewise furnished to the Honorable Municipal Mayor Rojelio N. Kinyo for its information and reference. So Mister Presiding Officer, I move for the approval for the proposed Resolution Number 2025-447B, Mister Presiding Officer.
So there's a motion for the approval of the proposed resolution formally requesting the Honorable Senator Juan Miguel E. Subiri to allocate funds amounting to 28 million pesos for the off-carriage way improvement along Deilayan Road barangay Deilayan, Manolo Fortiz Bukinon. Any second?
I second the motion Mister Presiding Officer.
Any comments? Ringnan, the motion is approved.
Thank you Mister Presiding Officer.
Thank you Honorable Dagunlay.
For item 1F, G, H, and I, I'd like to call Honorable Raquel Aballes Bayakag to sponsor the items.
The Honorable Raquel Aballes Bayakag is recognized?
Mister Presiding Officer, I would like to present and request the simultaneous approval of the three related resolutions.
Okay, go ahead.
For proposed resolutions Number 2025-448B-P, a resolution congratulating and commending Ms. Cassandra Fritzi Sanchez Payanga for successfully completing her competency requirements for a full qualification in trainers methodology for pharmacist and for becoming a TESDA certified assessor. For the proposed resolution Number 2025-450B-P, a resolution congratulating and commending Ms. Katrina Sanchez Payanga for successfully completing her competency requirements for a full qualification in trainers methodology for caregiving and for becoming a TESDA certified assessor. And for the proposed resolution Number 2025-451B-P, a resolution congratulating and commending Ms. Lilani Melisio San Juan for successfully completing her competency requirements for a full qualification in trainers methodology for housekeeping and for becoming a TESDA certified assessor. Authored by yours truly and co-authored by Honorable Kristi L Salabi. Let me read the where assess.
Good, go ahead.
Whereas under the Republic Act Number 7796 known as the Technical Education and Skills Development Act of 1994, the government has established a framework to promote technical education and skills development empowering individuals to thrive in the local market, in the labor market. Whereas Ms. Cassandra Fritzi Sanchez Payanga, Ms. Katrina Sanchez Payanga, and Ms. Lilani Melisio San Juan has exemplified remarkable dedication, perseverance, and hard work balancing their full-time employment with their educational pursuits thereby setting a compelling example for their peers. Whereas on July 28th in Valencia City, Bukinon, Ms. Cassandra Fritzi Sanchez Payanga, Ms. Katrina Sanchez Payanga, and Ms. Lilani Melisio San Juan graduated and completed their competency requirements and passed the assessment for trainers methodology for pharmacist, caregiving, and housekeeping respectively. They passed the assessment for the this demonstrating their commitment to the excellence in education and training. Whereas further their professional qualifications completed the TESDA training for assessor program equipping their essential skills and knowledge to conduct assessments effectively followed by a successfully passing the relevant assessment on November 8, 2025 at the Bukinon Provincial Training Center. Whereas with their relevant experiences and recent qualification, Ms. Cassandra Fritzi Sanchez Payanga, Ms. Katrina Sanchez Payanga, and Ms. Lilani Melisio San Juan now recognized as TESDA qualified and certified assessor marking their significant contributions to the field of vocational education and skills development. Whereas this notable achievement not only highlights Ms. Cassandra Fritzi Sanchez Payanga's individual capability together with Ms. Katrina Sanchez Payanga and Ms. Lilani Melisio San Juan, but it also serves as an inspiration to others illustrating the profound impact of dedication to lifelong learning and personal growth. Now therefore be it resolved as it is thereby resolved in the 21st Sangguniang Bayan Session Assembled extending our heartfelt congratulations and commending Ms. Cassandra Fritzi Sanchez Payanga, Ms. Cassandra, Ms. Katrina Sanchez Payanga, and Ms. Lilani Melisio San Juan for their outstanding accomplishment in successfully completing their competency requirements and full qualification in trainers methodology and in becoming the TESDA qualified and certified assessor. Resolve further that a copy of this resolution be furnished to Ms. Cassandra Fritzi S. Payanga, to Ms. Katrina Sanchez Payanga, and to Ms. Lilani Melisio San Juan and their family as a token of municipality's recognition and pride in their achievement. Resolve finally that a copy of this resolution be furnished to the municipal mayor Rojelio N. Kinyo for his information and reference. Mister Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of the proposed Resolution Number 2025-448B-P, 2025-450B-P, and 2025-451B-P.
So there's a motion, omnibus motion for the approval of the proposed resolution congratulating and commending Ms. Cassandra Fritzi Sanchez Payanga for successfully completing her competency requirements for a full qualification in trainers methodology for pharmacist and for becoming a TESDA qualified assessor. For Mister Joey, oh no, for Ms. Katrina Sanchez Payanga for successfully completing her competency requirements for a full qualification in trainers methodology for caregiving and for becoming a TESDA qualified assessor. And for Ms. Lilani Melisio San Juan for successfully completing her competency requirements for a full qualification in trainers methodology for housekeeping and for becoming a TESDA qualified assessor. So any second?
Second Mister Presiding Officer.
Any comments? Ringnan, the motion is approved.
For the proposed Resolution Number 2025-449B-P, a resolution congratulating and commending Mister Joey Tagupay Yek Yek of the Milag, Manolo Fortiz Bukinon for successfully graduating with a degree of Master of Government Management at COC Finma Cagayan de Oro City on October 25, 2025. This is authored by yours truly and co-authored by Honorable Counselor Kristi L. Salabi. Whereas under Republic Act Number 7722 known as the Higher Education Act of 1994, the government promotes the continuous development and improvement of higher education institutions to facilitate professional growth and public service excellence. Whereas Mister Joey Tagupay Yek Yek has exemplified extraordinary dedication and resilience by successfully earning his degree on Master of Government Management while balancing the demands of his full-time government job. Whereas Mister Joey Tagupay Yek Yek graduates graduation on October 25, 2025 from COC Finma Cagayan de Oro City stands as testament to his unwavering commitment to personal growth and the advancement of his capabilities in public service aligning with the principles of service integrity and lifelong learning as espoused in the Code of Conduct and Ethical Standards of Public Officials and Employees Republic Act Number 6713. Whereas for pursuing higher education while fulfilling his professional responsibility, Mister Joey Tagupay Yek Yek serves as an inspiring model for his colleagues and community demonstrating that perseverance and dedication lead to success. Whereas this achievement not only enriches Mister Joey Tagupay Yek Yek's career but also enhances the effectiveness of the government in serving the public, contributing positively to the overall welfare of the community. Now therefore be it resolved that we the 21st Sangguniang Bayan extend our heartfelt congratulations and commend Mister Joey Tagupay Yek Yek for his outstanding accomplishment in graduating with a Master of Government Management. Resolve further that a copy of this resolution be furnished to Mister Joey Tagupay Yek Yek and his family as a token of the Manolo Fortiz recognition and pride in his achievement. Resolve finally that a copy of this resolution be furnished to the office of the mayor Rojelio N. Kinyo for his information and reference. Mister Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of this Resolution Number 2025-449B-P.
So there's a motion for the approval of the proposed resolution congratulating and commending Mister Joey Tagupay Yek Yek of the Milag, Manolo Fortiz Bukinon for successfully graduating with a degree of Master of Government Management at COC Finma Cagayan de Oro on October 25, 2025. Any second? Any comments? The Honorable Payanga?
Just, just for a clarification, Mister Yek Yek is our employee, municipal employee, but he is not a Latin awardee. So we are just commending because of of his kivali pagka empleyado niya. Then he graduated to this particular course or masteral. But he is not a Latin. No, kela hi to siya na. So meaning to say, because Mister Yek Yek, he graduated in that particular course and because he is also an employee, that is why we commend, no? At least klaro siya nga gikometsiya it's because he is an employee of this municipality. Thank you Mister Presiding Officer.
Thank you Honorable Payanga for that clarification. Any further comments? So there being none, the motion of the Honorable Abales is now approved.
Thank you very much.
For item 1J, I'd like to call Honorable Rena I Kinyo to sponsor your item.
The Honorable Rena Kinyo?
Good morning everyone, Mister Presiding Officer.
Mr. Presiding Officer, good morning. This is the transferred item 1J, the proposed resolution number 2025-452B-P. A resolution congratulating and commending Mr. JV Kagatin, a resident of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon, for being awarded as a champion of the 80 Kilometers Dato Salumay Invitational Trail Run Dal Sa 18, held last November 8, 2025, in Dato Salumay Marilog District, Davao City. Authored by Honorable Rena I. Quinio, whereas the Dato Salumay Invitational Trail Run held on November 8, 2025, in Dato Salumay Marilog District, Davao City, is recognized as one of Mindanao's toughest and most prestigious trail running events, featuring an 80-kilometer course with a total elevation gain of 5,500 meters and serving as the event's first Asia Trail Master Grandmaster Quest. Whereas the Dal Sa 18 is known for its extreme terrain and challenging environmental conditions, marked by the steep ascents and descents, rugged natural obstacles, and cold mountain temperatures testing an endurance, skill, and resilience of even the most seasoned trail runners. Whereas Mr. JV Kagatin, a proud resident of the municipality of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon, emerged as the champion in the 80-kilometer trail run category of the Dato Salumay Invitational Trail Run Dal Sa 18, completing the grueling race in an exemplary time of 15 hours and 22 minutes, a testament to his outstanding athletic performance, unwavering discipline, and remarkable determination in conquering one of the most demanding trail races in Asia. Whereas Mr. Kagatin is widely regarded as one of the Philippines' top trail runners, consistently excelling in the Asia Trail Master Circuit and other premier endurance competition, with notable previous achievements including champion of the Mount Kalatungan Trail Ultra 2024, 85 kilometers, with 13 hours and 30 minutes and 32 seconds. Podium finishes in the Punisher Ultra Marathon 2024, third place, 80 kilometers, with an 11 hours and 25 minutes and 14 seconds. Muspo Ultra 50, 2024, and third place, 56.2 kilometers, with 6 hours and 9 minutes and 7 seconds. And Hardcore Ultra Trail, King of Mountain, KOTM, 2025, third overall, holding of a UTMB index of 637, affirming his competitive standing in the international trail running community. Whereas through his dedication and success, Mr. Kagatin has brought honor and recognition to the municipality of Manolo Fortiche and to the province of Bukidnon, inspiring fellow athletes and youth to pursue excellence, perseverance, and healthy lifestyle. Whereas his triumph at the Dal Sa 18 not only highlights his personal achievement but also showcases the strength and potential of Filipino athletes in the global trail running arena, contributing to the promotion of sports, tourism, and environmental awareness in Mindanao. Whereas the Sanguniang Bayan of Manolo Fortiche deems it proper to extend its warmest congratulations and commendation to JV Kagatin for his exemplary accomplishment and as a model of inspiration to the athletes of Manolo Fortiche and the province of Bukidnon. Now therefore, on motion of this representation, be it resolved, as it hereby resolved, to congratulate and commend Mr. JV Kagatin, a resident of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon, for exceptional performance and victory as champion of the 2025 Dato Salumay Invitational Trail Run Dal Sa 18 held in Dato Salumay Marilog District, Davao City. Resolve further that a copy of this resolution be awarded to Mr. JV Kagatin together with his family as a symbol of the municipal government's pride and recognition of his exemplary achievements. Resolve finally that a copies of this resolution be furnished to the Sports for All Department, to Manford Runners Club, and to the municipal mayor Roelio N. Quinio for their information and reference. Mr. Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of the proposed resolution number 2025-452B-P.
So there's a motion for the approval of the proposed resolution congratulating and commending Mr. JV Kagatin, a resident of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon, for being awarded as a champion of the 80-kilometer Dato Salumay Invitational Trail Run Dal Sa 18, held last November 8, 2025, in Dato Salumay Marilog District, Davao City. Any second?
Second.
Any comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
For item 1K, L, M, N, and O, I'd like to call Consul Joy Cordobes to sponsor the items.
The Honorable Cordobes?
For transferred item 1K, a proposed resolution number 2025-453B-P. A resolution congratulating and commending Ms. Aliana Faith Archibalerro RND for being conferred the 2024 Region 10 Outstanding Municipal Nutrition Program Coordinator Award by the National Nutrition Council Region 10, authored by yours truly and all the members of the Sanguniang Bayan present. Whereas the National Nutrition Council Region 10, the government agency responsible for formulating and coordinating nutrition policies and programs in northern Mindanao, held its 2025 Regional Nutrition Awarding Ceremony on November 6, 2025, at Lim Kit Kailax Hotel, Cagayan de Oro City. Whereas Ms. Aliana Faith Archibalerro RND, the Municipal Nutrition Program Coordinator of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon, was conferred the 2024 Region 10 Outstanding Municipal Nutrition Program Coordinator Award in recognition of her remarkable commitment, professional excellence, and leadership in promoting and sustaining nutrition programs within the municipality. Whereas the recognition reflects Ms. Archibalerro's exemptional contribution to improving the nutritional status and overall health of the people of Manolo Fortiche through his steadfast coordination, innovation, and collaboration with various stakeholders in the implementation of local nutrition initiatives. Whereas her achievement not only brings honor and pride to herself but also to the Municipal Nutrition Action Office and the local government unit of Manolo Fortiche as it exemplifies the spirit of dedication and service to the community. Now therefore, on motion unanimously seconded, be it resolved, as it is hereby resolved, by the 21st Sanguniang Bayan of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon to congratulate and commend Ms. Aliana Faith Archibalerro RND for being conferred the 2024 Region 10 Outstanding Municipal Nutrition Program Coordinator by Nutrition, National Nutrition Council Region 10. Resolve further that a copy of this resolution be furnished to Ms. Aliana Faith Archibalerro RND as a token of recognition and appreciation for her exemplary performance and contribution to local nutrition development. Resolve finally that a copy of this resolution be likewise furnished to Honorable Municipal Mayor Roelio N. Quinio for his information and reference. I salute Mr. Presiding Officer for the approval of this proposed resolution.
So there's a motion for the approval of the proposed resolution congratulating and commending Ms. Aliana Faith Archibalerro RND for being conferred the 2024 Regional, Region 10 Outstanding Municipal Nutrition Program Coordinator Award by the National Nutrition Council Region 10. Any second?
I second.
Any comments? The motion is approved.
For transferred item 1L, proposed solutions number 25-454B-P. A resolution congratulating and commending Ms. Stephanie A. Pipito RND for winning the Best News Article Award for her article entitled Conduct of Nutrition Caravan 2025 at Barangay Maluco during the 6th Regional Nutri Webby Awards organized by the National Nutrition Council Region 10, held on November 6, 2025, at Lim Kit Kailax Hotel, Cagayan de Oro City, authored by Honorable Joy El Cordobes and all the members of the Sanguniang Bayan present. Whereas the National Nutrition Council Region 10 launched the 6th Regional Nutri Webby Awards, an annual event recognizing local government units and local nutrition committees in Region 10 for their exemplary efforts in promoting good nutrition and positive behavioral change to social media initiatives which was held on November 6, 2025, at Lim Kit Kailax Hotel, Cagayan de Oro City. Whereas Ms. Stephanie A. Pipito RND, Nutrition Officer 1 of the Municipal Nutrition Action Office, was recognized as the Best News Article Awardee for her article entitled Conduct of Nutrition Caravan 2025 at Barangay Maluco, which demonstrated excellence in composition and effectively contributed to the promotion of good nutrition to social medias, to social media. Whereas her remarkable achievement brings pride and honor to the municipality of Manolo Fortiche and serves as an inspiration for her colleagues and fellow public servants to continually strive for excellence and innovation in promoting public health and nutrition. Whereas the local government unit of Manolo Fortiche fully supports and recognizes the exemplary performance of its employees who contribute significantly to the advancement of nutrition programs and public service excellence. Now therefore, on motion unanimously seconded, be it resolved, as it is hereby resolved, by the 21st Sanguniang Bayan of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon to congratulate and commend Ms. Stephanie A. Pipito RND for her outstanding achievement and invaluable contribution to nutrition advocacy. Resolve further that a copy of this resolution be furnished to Ms. Stephanie A. Pipito RND as a token of recognition and appreciation for exemplary performance. Resolve finally that a copy of this resolution be likewise furnished to the Honorable Municipal Mayor Roelio N. Quinio for his information and reference. I move, Mr. Presiding Officer, for the approval of this proposed resolution.
So there's a motion for the approval of the proposed resolution congratulating and commending Ms. Stephanie A. Pipito RND for winning the Best News Article Award for her article entitled Conduct of Nutrition Caravan 2025 at Barangay Maluco during the 6th Regional Nutri Webby Awards organized by the National Nutrition Council Region 10, held on November 6, 2025, at Lim Kit Kailax Hotel, Cagayan de Oro City. Any second?
I second.
Any comments? So it's actually RND, RDN.
Registered nurse, Monsieur.
As per Google, is registered dietitian nutritionist, RDN.
RDN.
Dietitian nutritionist, dietitian nutritionist dietitian.
Ah.
RDN.
Just like sa among DDM, Doctor of Dental Medicine, ma, interchange. RND? I will verify that, Mr. Presiding Officer, later on.
Okay.
Pero, Mrs. Chairman, just, ah, can I say is mga empleyado ni sa SMGPO?
Yes.
Ah, okay.
They are all employees.
These two guys.
Ah, si ano, si Aliana Faith and Ms. Aliana Faith is recognized as the regional.
Hmm.
And Stephanie Pipito. Stephanie Pipito sa iya hanggwan. PRC.
Ah, PRC.
RND in PRC daw, RND.
Hmm, so, okay, congratulations.
Any further comments? There being no more comments, the proposed resolution number 2025-454B-P is now approved.
For transferred item 1M, a proposed solution number 2025-455B-P. A resolution commending, congratulating and commending the Municipal Nutrition Action Office for having been conferred the Nutrition Honor Award, award of merit by the National Nutrition Council Region 10 during the 2025 Regional Nutrition Awarding Ceremony held on November 6, 2025, at Lim Kit Kailax Hotel, Cagayan de Oro City, authored by Honorable Joy El Cordobes, DMD, and co-authored by all members of the Sanguniang Bayan present. Whereas the National Nutrition Council Region 10, the government agency responsible for coordinating nutrition programs implementation in northern Mindanao, held its 2025 Regional Nutrition Award ceremony on November 6, 2025, at Lim Kit Kailax, Cagayan de Oro City. Whereas the set awarding ceremony recognized outstanding local government units, local nutrition committees, and individual nutrition workers in Region 10 for their exemplary dedication, leadership, and performance in the effective implementation of nutrition programs. Whereas the Municipal Nutrition Action Office has been conferred the prestigious Nutrition Honor Award, NHA, award of merit in recognition of its consistent and excellent implementation of nutrition programs and its significant contribution towards the reduction of malnutrition in the municipality. Whereas the Nutrition Honor Award is the highest regional distinction bestowed by the National Nutrition Council upon the LGUs that have sustained outstanding nutrition program performance and demonstrated effective multi-sexual government in nutrition. Whereas this recognition brings pride and honor not only to the Municipal Nutrition Action Office but also to the local government unit of Manolo Fortiche as it highlight the community's commitment to promoting health, nutrition, and overall development. Resolve, resolve, as it is hereby resolved, by the 21st Sanguniang Bayan of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon to congratulate and commend the Municipal Nutrition Action Office for having been conferred the Nutrition Honor Award, award of merit by the National Nutrition Council Region 10 during the 2025 Regional Nutrition Award ceremony held on November 6, 2025, at Lim Kit Kailax Hotel, Cagayan de Oro City. Resolve further that a copy of this resolution be furnished to Municipal Nutrition Action Office through its Municipal Nutrition Action Officer, Ms. Ricky May Be Lucero RND, as a token of recognition and appreciation for their exemplary performance. And resolve finally that a copy of this resolution be likewise furnished to the Honorable Municipal Mayor Roelio N. Quinio for his information and reference. I salute, Mr. Presiding Officer, for the approval of this proposed resolution.
So there's a motion for the approval of proposed resolution congratulating and commending the Municipal Nutrition Action Office for having been conferred the National Honor Award, award of merit by the National Nutrition Council Region 10 during the 2025 Regional Nutrition Award ceremony held on November 6, 2025, at Lim Kit Kailax Hotel, Cagayan de Oro City. Any second?
I second.
Any comments? The motion is approved.
For transferred item 1N, a proposed solution number 2025-456B-P. A resolution commending the Municipal Nutrition Action Office for winning third place in the 6th Regional Nutri Webby Awards by the Nutrition, Nutrition, National Nutrition Council Region 10, authored by yours truly and all the members of the Sanguniang Bayan present. Whereas the National Nutrition Council Region 10, the government agency responsible for the formation coordination and monitoring of nutrition policies and programs in northern Mindanao, conducted the 2025 Regional Nutrition Award ceremony on November 6, 2025, at Lim Kit Kailax Hotel, Cagayan de Oro City. Whereas the set ceremony recognized exemplary local government units, local nutrition committees, and individual nutrition advocates in Region 10 for their outstanding performance in implementing and promoting nutrition programs. Whereas among the highlights of the ceremony was the 6th Regional Nutri Webby Awards, which recognized the best managed and most innovative nutrition social media platforms and online communication initiative of LGUs and nutrition office in the region. Whereas the Municipal Nutrition Action Office of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon was conferred third place in the 6th Regional Nutri Webby Award for its creativity, consistency, and effective use of digital media in promoting nutrition-related activities, programs, and advocacy campaigns. Whereas this achievement demonstrates the Municipal Nutrition Action Office's commitment to advancing nutrition awareness and public engagement through innovative communication strategies hereby contributing significantly to the municipality's overall nutrition governance. Resolve, as it is hereby resolved, by the 21st Sanguniang Bayan of Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon to commend the Municipal Nutrition Action Office for winning third place in the 6th Regional Nutri Webby Awards by the Nutrition, by National Nutrition Council Region 10. Resolve further that a copy of this resolution be furnished, be furnished to the Municipal Nutrition Action Office through its Municipal Nutrition Action Officer, Ms. Ricky May Be Lucero RND, as a token of recognition and appreciation for their exemplary performance. Resolve further that a copy of this resolution be furnished to the Honorable Municipal Mayor Roelio N. Quinio for his information and reference. I move, Mr. Presiding Officer, I move, Mr. Presiding Officer, for the approval of this proposed resolution.
So there's a motion for the approval of the proposed resolution commending the Municipal Nutrition Action Office for winning third place in the sixth Regional Nutri Webby Awards by the National Nutrition Council Region Ten. Any second?
A second.
Any comments? The Honorable Peña.
Do you have a proof of, can I?
Yes, we have.
Yeah.
I was there.
Okay.
Together with our mayor, we received the award together with M. Now Ricky Lucero and Ms. Aliana Faith Archibalerro.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
And we have pictures also. You want an evidence?
Okay, any further comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
And lastly, for transferred item one O, proposed resolution number twenty twenty-five dash four five seven B dash P. A resolution congratulating and commending the Municipal Nutrition Action Office for winning first place for the highest number of articles submitted and first place for the highest number of unique contents during the sixth Regional Nutri Webby Awards organized by the National Nutrition Council Region Ten, authored again by yours truly and all the members of the Sangguniang Bayan present. Whereas the National Nutrition Council Region Ten, the government agency responsible for formulating and coordinating nutrition policies and programs in northern Mindanao, conducted its twenty twenty-five Regional Nutrition Awarding Ceremony on November sixth, twenty twenty-five at Lim Kit Kailax Hotel, Cagayan, Euro City. Whereas as part of the event, the sixth Regional Nutri Webby Awards was held to recognize outstanding local government units, local nutrition committees, and nutrition offices that demonstrate excellence in online advocacy and digital promotion of nutrition programs. Whereas the Municipal Nutrition Action Office garnered first place for the highest number of articles submitted and first place for the highest number of unique contents during the said competition, showcasing its commitment to promoting nutrition awareness through consistent, high-quality online content. Whereas this recognition highlights the dedication, creativity, and teamwork of the Municipal Nutrition Action Office in using digital media as a tool to inform, educate, and engage the public on health and nutrition initiatives. Whereas such an achievement brings pride and honor to the municipality of Manolo Fortiche and served as an inspiration for other local government offices to strengthen their nutrition advocacy and programs information campaigns. Now therefore, on motion unanimously seconded, be it resolved, as it is hereby resolved by the twenty-first Sangguniang Bayan of Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon, uh, to congratulate and commend the Municipal Nutrition Action Office for winning first place for the highest number of articles submitted and first place for the highest number of unique contents during the sixth Regional Nutri Webby Awards organized by the National Nutrition Council Region Ten. Resolve further that a copy of this resolution be furnished to the Municipal Nutrition Action Office through its Municipal Nutrition Action Officer, Ms. Ricky May B. Lucero RND, as a token of recognition and appreciation for their exemplary performance and contribution to local nutrition governance. Resolve further that a copy of this resolution be likewise be furnished to Honorable Municipal Mayor Roelio N. Quinio for his information and reference. I sub move, Mr. Presiding Officer, for the approval of this proposed resolution.
So there's a motion for the approval of the proposed resolution congratulating and commending the Municipal Nutrition Action Office for winning first place for the highest number of articles submitted and first place for the highest number of unique contents during the sixth Regional Nutri Webby Awards organized by the National Nutrition Council Region Ten. Any second?
Second, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Any comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Cordobes. For the last item.
For item one P. Um, it is a letter from the municipal mayor requesting authority to enter into a memorandum of agreement with Happy Home Foundation Incorporated for the release of financial assistance in support for its operation as a primary mental health care facility in the province of Bukidnon. In the attached document, Mr. Presiding Officer, is the memorandum of agreement, which the first party shall be represented by our local chief executive and for the second party will be from the Happy Home Foundation Incorporated, represented by the administrator, Senior Julita Cerrohalas, MCM. So the first, uh, the first party shall provide financial assistance.
I think that's sister.
Sister, then, eh? I saw. Stand corrected. Stand corrected, Mr. Presiding Officer, is Sister Julita B. Cerrohalas, MCM. So, um, the LGU, the first party, will provide financial assistance to the second party to support its operational cost amounting to fifty thousand. This is included in the supplemental budget number three for the calendar year twenty twenty-five, Mr. Presiding Officer. So I think it is very beneficial and it is necessary, so I move for its approval.
So there's a motion for the approval of the request of the municipal mayor for him to enter into a memorandum of agreement with Happy Home Foundation Incorporated for the release of the financial assistance in support for its operation as primary mental health care facility in the province of Bukidnon. Any second? Any comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
Um, all the transferred item has been tackled already, Mr. Presiding Officer. Um, there is a, can we proceed to the announcement?
The announcements?
For announcement, for the announcement of the executive number, Executive Order Number Fifty-seven from the municipal mayor, uh, they want us to read this executive, Mr. Presiding Officer. It is an executive order reconstituting the local health board of the municipality of Manolo Fortiche, identifying its members, their duties and functions, and other purposes.
Who are the members?
The members.
From the Sangguniang Bayan?
Is, um, Sangguniang Bayan Committee on Health, Joy Cordobes is the member of, the represent, uh, the representative from the Sangguniang Bayan.
Okay.
So I think, do I have to read everything, Mr. Presiding Officer? Okay?
So as long as the member will be given a copy.
Okay. And next, another executive order number fifty-eight, series of twenty twenty-five, executive order reconstituting the, uh, the same day. Oh, like, the local school board of the municipality of Manolo Fortiche, identifying its members, their duties, and functions, and other purposes. For the Sangguniang Bayan, Mr. Presiding Officer, it will be represented by yours truly, the committee chair on education.
Okay. For the local health board, the Honorable Cordobes, and for the local school board, the Honorable Departo.
So, Mr. Presiding Officer, I think everything has been tackled, I'd like to call.
For more announcement, uh, on Monday, oh, no, Tuesday, November eighteen, the Sangguniang Bayan members are invited to the Farmers Field School on Vegetable in Santiago, one PM, Tuesday. Next week, eighteen, November eighteen. And on Monday, um, the fourth Municipal Livelihood Summit twenty twenty-five will be at the municipal gym, nine o'clock after the convocation. The Honorable Salabi is naasa welcome message.
Um, Mr. Chair, during katong sa Santiago, bitaw nga event, Mr. Chair, magtapok, rataan na dery, tapos dungan natal dito? Or, ansa man?
Pwede ra.
Okay, para maisa, raba.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And then, um, committee hearings Monday also. There will be a convocation sponsored by the Department of Education on Monday. After that, there will be a livelihood summit. Pero, meron ag si Conceal Departo, reseguro y manto dito?
Can I, Monsieur, Mr. Chair, it's a graduation of all the livelihood trainings that we provided to.
So can we move our committee hearing in the afternoon?
Ano ba'tay mga letters, invitation letters?
Notice na lang.
Wala pa'tay mga invitations, so pwede ra sa sapun? Okay ra?
Oo.
To the members? Excuse me. Okay ra sa hapun, a committee hearing on Monday? Because tomorrow, after the, uh, Monday, after the convocation will be the livelihood summit and then after lunch na ta mag committee hearing.
Okay.
Okay ra? Okay? So the, uh, the committee hearing on Monday will be in the afternoon. Then tomorrow's RQPS will be in Barangay.
Lingion?
Lingion. Lingion. And then tomorrow, also, Honorable Cordobes will be the awarding for the child-friendly municipality LGU ba? Ikaw mo dito? Last new B? Dito sa Pearl Moon? Ikaw, eto. I think, napu dito si Mam Cisil. Okay, um, time saa? Wala na siguro?
Wala na announcements. Okay, Mr. Presiding Officer, since we've already finished our agendas for today's regular session and there are no other announcements, I move for the adjournment of this regular session.
So there's a motion for the adjournment of today's regular session, any second? Any comments? Objections? There being none, the motion is approved. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much, Honorable.